As a result of the. I hope that didn't just start. If this commission decides to grant site.
Be recorded.
Okay, that's fine. If the commission has any specific questions related to traffic, I will be here throughout the throughout the hearing and be happy to answer those questions at the appropriate time. At this time, I'll turn it back over to attorney Smith to wrap up our presentation, I hope.
Okay. Oh, no.
Anyways, if we could just possibly go back to those first few slides with aerials. Oh, you're multitasking. That might be the. Just just had a couple of just a general set of comments and then I don't know if Mr. Miller would like to cover anything, but just. I think you saw the the initial aerial with the existing conditions and then and Mr. Will had superimposed the site development on the on the property. It'd be the one right after that. Wait, almost there. There we go.
Way at the beginning.
So I guess just a couple of quick points. The that the proposed development we respectfully submit to the commission is a appropriate adaptive reuse redevelopment of of this underperforming property, an old motel and two single family homes located on it on a major arterial road, which is obviously the Berlin Turnpike or Route 15. This is consistent with the purpose. The Zone Text Amendment, at least the stated purpose. But again, this is just referring to the site plan application is in close proximity with the next slide, please, Maureen, if we can. Two other multi-family residential housing. Can't see that. A little over half a mile down the road, the Regency Townhouse Complex located on the Berlin Turnpike. And again, respectfully submit to the commission that this is a an appropriate smart growth tool for the area. I don't know if Mr. Miller, if you have any comments that you'd like to go through relative to slides that you had prepared. I know some of that had gone to the text amendment.
Um, yeah, I could. I could. I'd like to just spend a few minutes on that if it's okay.
Absolutely. I think that would be important to do.
Can I share my screen here?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
It's like he's in Ireland.
No, he's out on the golf course.
Glad you mowed your lawn.
Yeah, it took me all day.
Yeah, I imagine.
I I did that because my I would have had to straighten out my office.
Yeah. It takes so much longer now.
Brian Miller, again, for the record, Miller Planning Associates. And what I'd like to do is I just go through this because I've gone through this with the commission a number of times. So I'm going to do it rather quickly. This just gives you the numbers here on I'm always asked that. And what would the rental be for these two bedrooms? At sixty percent, it'd be eleven seventy and it the eighty percent for those people, it would be fourteen thirty six and with the proper utility allowances, it may vary. And again, it varies on an annual basis. So this is based on the twenty twenty two median family. And I don't know if twenty twenty three went out. It didn't hadn't been done when I submitted this, but it would have to be done annually anyway. Just another thing is is on affordable housing and I'll go through this quickly, but I took a look at the salary ranges of town municipal personnel. The contracts are available online either from the Board of Ed or from the town in the Human Resources Office. And these are the ones that would qualify. These positions would qualify at some level here or some of the affordable housing, some of it most all this would qualify in the eighty percent. And some would even qualify for the sixty percent. These are the mid-management group, not the These are the professionals really that that run the town, the Economic Development Director, the Assistant Finance Director Assessor, etc. And then everybody in the white collar, blue collar would also be eligible in those classifications and and police officers through the third year. As you know, they they have graduated income. In the other mid-management group, we have the Administrative Assistant, librarian, and the mid-management group B as well, zoning enforcement officer, or men of public grounds, assistant building inspector, budget analyst. These would all qualify. So this is quite a chunk of the town hall in the Board of Education. Most of these personnel such as the the non-teachers would also qualify. But it's also interesting that the teachers, which their salaries based on the level of education as well as the levels they've reached and as far as years. Teachers requiring a BA, all teachers within that category would be eligible. Teachers requiring MA up to the eleventh state, and I think that's I think there's only twelve or fifteen. And even teachers requiring a PhD, all their salaries would fall into this category. And this was based on your affordable housing plan, which I understand much of it being adopted for your POC update. But one of the things I'd like to write here and I know the the way it came out that that time is too is too small for me to read as well, but just if I could do this. Even it says this is a feature of the Berlin Turnpike. Even with the retail progress in the north, the most significant development along the Berlin Turnpike within the past couple of years has been the residential along the south end. The residential development transforming this area from an area of scattered marginal commercial uses into a growing vibrant neighborhood. And this is what we propose to continue. As you know, I think that there's been tremendous progress in the development of the Turnpike. And that was always a question that was put to me years ago, and it's still a question. What do we do about the Berlin Turnpike? And I think the commercial development and some of the residential development on the north and north in the area north of Route nine has been has been very beneficial. But really, all these properties, these old motels, and I think you found this also is that residential development is has been a way to kind of clean up the Turnpike. It's also restoring a little bit more vibrancy as Mr. Pence gives. It doesn't really affect the traffic, top traffic characteristic for the Turnpike. I think, you know, when I was asked, what are you doing about the the Berlin Turnpike? And I didn't really have a good answer because we weren't really considering it at the time. But I think this is your good answer. And whether it be the eight thirty G or under your regular regulations, I think it's still as beneficial. And you talk about your your affordable housing plan also talked about the cost burden and forty seven percent of the renters in in Berlin are cost burdened. And it's much more common in for the renters. So again, the cost of housing for the renters is cost burdensome. And I think that this commission is needs to be avoided for allowing quite a bit of multifamily residential in the town. And I don't think it's a burden. I think it's a good thing. I think it's a good thing in the town I live in and all the towns I've worked in. Some of the commissions don't agree with me. But I I do applaud the commission from opening up the possibilities of this. And again, this is this is from the twenty nineteen. This is actually, I apologize, this was in twice. And then finally, this whole little thing here shows the the types of recent residential development that have occurred. And you could see it's sort of scattered. But the one place that you really the to kind of bring a more of a sense of neighborhood would be on the lower end of the Turnpike. And also with the lower end of the Turnpike, more multifamily residential will increase the retail component down there as well. So that is my again, this is from your twenty twenty three update. And we're all talking about, you know, implementation of the Affordable Housing Plan and maintaining the increase, the supply of housing designed to occupy by seniors. Much of what we're talking about here could be for seniors. And, you know, without any sort of adversity. And with that, I will, if you have any questions, if not, I will yield to you.
Kind of lost you at the end there, Brian. Chris Smith, for the record. Brian, a quick question. Can you just explain to the remind the commission what cost burden means and maybe for folks in the audience?
It means that for any household that's spending more than thirty percent of its income on housing. And it's particularly relevant for rentals who are in the lower end of the income strata in that that means that they have very little to spend for other necessities in life. So it is it's been a measure that came in your Affordable Housing Plan. And also, I would just suggest that only talks about the people currently living in Berlin, not the people that might have lived in Berlin, may have grown up there. And because the burden would be too high, have been forced into other communities or even are still, you know, living with mom and dad.
All right, thank you. That Madam Chairwoman, excuse me, Madam Chairwoman, members of the commission does conclude our initial presentation. I know we're going to have questions from you. We'll be responding to comments from the consultants and any citizens, but purposes of our presentation.
Okay.
It's completed. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. So I'll turn to the commission first as we are as a public hearing. Do you have any questions at this time?
I do.
Yes, go ahead. I'd like to ask a question as far as the traffic. Scott Hesketh, you're on deck. Oh, he's listening. Come on down. When you did that traffic study, did you? Oh. Got to be higher, I guess. Yeah.
When you did the traffic study, did you? How did you do that? Did you put one of those wires out there to calculate how much traffic goes by, how fast they go by? Because the reason I ask, I've lived on Orchard Road, three cars out of my life, and I'm over sixty. So I've seen the traffic change there. That light that's right near that hotel or the house really hasn't been there that many years. And for the number of times that I've traveled on that road, going back and forth to work at Northeast Utilities for thirty some odd years. People go faster than fifty four. Now, when I pull out on from Orchard Road to the Berlin Turnpike, I wait a couple of maybe five seconds to make sure everybody stops at that light by Atlas. I don't know if it's Atlas.
Yeah, it's.
So the stoplights there are just a suggestion. And the traffic there, depending on what time of day, I think it's going to be a little bit more impactful on the people coming out of that area. And maybe not in right in front of that hotel. But just a further bit down, there have been many fatalities in that area. So I'd like to just know, how did you get your calculations?
Well, the traffic volumes contained in the report came from the Connecticut Department of Transportation. They installed tubes across the roadway and did counts. We used, we relied on their data. They also conducted the speed counts, which we had presented in the report. And eighty-fifth percentile speed, just so you know that that's the speed at which fifteen percent of the drivers exceed that speed, but eighty-five percent of them drive that speed or slower. So when we presented the eighty-fifth percentile speed of fifty-four miles per hour, that means there are some people going faster, sure. But eighty-five percent of the of the traveling public goes that speed or less as they traverse the roadway. And those are conduct counts, not my counts. So.
And when did they do that?
Oh, they tended to count on a three-year period. The latest count was two twenty twenty one. Previous to that was two thousand fifteen. Since two thousand twenty one was a COVID year, the traffic volumes were lower. I just so you know, in two thousand twenty one, they counted about twenty seven thousand vehicles a day. In two thousand fifteen, they counted thirty one thousand six hundred. So rather than use the twenty twenty one counts, we went back to the two thousand fifteen counts and used that for our analysis. The DOT is, they've been saying recently that if you do counts today, they're going to be lower than they have been pre-COVID, but we don't expect them to go as high as they used to be for for many years to come because there's more people working from home. Population in Connecticut has been declining lately. You got people working from home more often. So traffic volumes, they don't expect them to go that high. But we went all the way back to twenty fifteen, the higher the highest volumes in in recent years out there and based our analysis on that. So we think it's a conservative analysis.
I would like to see a more current one, to be quite honest with you, because there's times when I'm coming down the Berlin Turnpike, right where that Dunkin' Donuts, which is further by Mickey Finn's, all the way to where I get off on Orchard Road can be bottlenecked. So I don't think it's an accurate report.
Okay, anyone else? Yeah, Tim.
Well, just with that information that he's got here. Daily trips increase by three hundred and six daily trips from the motel residential resident that properties that are there right now. So that is a high. It increases to three hundred and seventy four trips. That's an increase for three hundred and six. That's a big increase. Have you thought about a deceleration lane and a acceleration lane on that driveway?
No, we don't believe it's warranted and we have not proposed it.
And have you contacted the the Berlin Police Department on their study of the highway of what the speeds are? Is they just did one?
I have not.
It was over sixty miles an hour each most of the time.
I have not had a conversation with the police department regarding this.
Please do. I think there should be a the acceleration and deceleration lane. Any any development that's putting out three hundred and seventy four trips per day. It's a lot to pull on after the Turnpike.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
I would say that if you had a gas station, you'd probably have that volume of traffic during an hour. And I'm sure there's many gas stations along the Turnpike, which do not have acceleration or deceleration lanes. We're looking at peak hour volumes in the range of twenty-five to thirty, which is fifteen entering or fifteen exiting movements. And I'm not sure that acceleration, deceleration.
You're correct. You're correct. The gas stations do not have a acceleration, deceleration lanes. But the standards today have put in those the deceleration and acceleration lanes. We did have the units above above here cut. We asked for two different properties above this, north of this. And other properties on Turnpike have the deceleration and acceleration lanes. So I'm I would take it up with the police department because they have better stats right now.
And just I'm just going to quickly just dovetail on that thought because where there is a light at Sprucebrook Road, which is south of the development, south of the emergency exit for the proposal. At Sprucebrook, there's a light, but there's also a light at Orchard Road. And by the Irving Station or the Atlantic Station, I guess they call it. The problem becomes, Mr. Hesketh. Anyone traveling that will know that a vehicle going southbound will accelerate to try to get through hopefully the first and the second light. And that's where the problem is. And you have people coming off of Sprucebrook Road that wait for the light and they seem to wait forever. The light turns green, but damn it, you can't move because you better stop because that car is going to be cutting right in front of you. And this has happened to me, and I think it's happened to anyone who's lived in this town long enough. Is that the the Berlin Turnpike is has a very intense speed to it. People no longer want to stop for lights, even though it means somebody else might be merging into their their lane or whatever. But so it is a consideration and that development is right there. So more people will be speeding to try to get through that Sprucebrook light. Yeah.
And I also said, I understand you only took a three-year survey here. And for those intersections, I personally know the paydals and pull people out of cars and both the intersections there. With a tux on when my brother.
No, 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 let's not go into details now.
And a bus accident right there at at Sprucebrook. And back in a trailer truck. So there has been major episodes at those intersections there, those two intersections that I think should be taken into consideration.
Okay, other questions really quick for the traffic or for anyone before we go to the general public or yet?
Did you? Commissioner Rogan?
Yes, Mr. Rogan.
Yeah, I was just, um. The discussion of the cost of burden got me thinking. And when looking at the site plan and everything, I see what we're trying to do, offering the housing opportunity to those who might want to live in Berlin, but otherwise couldn't afford to. But what I'm not seeing in this site plan is safe access to public transit because as we've seen, especially in recent years with interest rates and everything, is that cost of cars can equal that of rent. So especially when talking about affordability. If you want to live in this development and you're, you know, you're pursuing the affordable aspect of it, it might not be realistic to own a car. So you're on a roadway that has public transit, but you don't have access to it or safe access. So that is a concern of mine.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan. We're in a public hearing, so I'm going to turn to the public to see if anyone there has any input or I don't know. I can't see.
Before I sit down, I will say that since we are on the Berlin Turnpike, which is maintained by the Connecticut Department of Transportation, it would be necessary for us to obtain an encroachment permit from the Department of Transportation in order to construct the driveway. They certainly will do a thorough and comprehensive review of the traffic impacts of this particular development. And obviously, if they insisted upon any type of off-site improvements related to the construction of the driveway, we would have to, you would have to comply with that. I don't anticipate it, but the commission should be aware that you are not the final reviewer of the of the traffic impacts of this development.
But we do want to bring some things to light.
Understood.
Okay. Ms. Daly?
Yes, and and just one thought I would add to that is I've heard you guys recognize that we're developing that area. And there may have been a comment, unless I misheard it, that increase in car counts would be decreasing or stabilized, but I think it's gonna do everything to increase because we're working on developments further north. We're Newing, is it Newington or Southington? It's on the north side of Berlin Turnpike. They have lots of development going in there, too. So this is going to continually increase. So safety and entrance and exiting the living location would be a concern, I think.
Okay, thank you. All right. Then I guess I'll turn to the public. Yes, sir. Yes.
First edge, two forty Kensington Road. It is not related to this project per se, but it actually is in response to Commissioner Rogan. I have been working with Connecticut Transit and DOT for for two years to get a bus line to come down the Turnpike. Currently, the only bus line goes from downtown to Britain to Meriden Mall right along all those businesses on the Chamberlain Highway. Insert joke here. My intent is to hopefully get a bus that will go down to New Park Drive, where we have some of our larger employers. I do not know if it'll go beyond that to this development, but it is being worked on. Again, it is DOT in the state. But I've been working on it for at least two years because I know the importance, especially with all the multifamily housing we're getting. I want residents to be able to get to the careers we have. So I'm trying, I'm hoping for less, but it's I we've made progress, which is a good thing. We've been able to get them to change their thing, which is we send the buses where the people are to send the people to where the careers, which was a big education for those folks. So it is being worked on. I have no idea time wise, but I mean, the good news is if that happens, it'll help solve a lot of things and hopefully provide opportunities for employers to grow with new residents in town. Thank you.
Address the commission regarding this application at this time. Well, again, we took in a lot of information. Anyone online? Oh, then from staff or our attorney?
We both probably going to say the same thing.
Same thing. Go ahead.
You have your consultants as well. Your engineering consultant is on Zoom and Mr. Chalter is here. So okay, if you want to offer them an opportunity to speak as well.
Okay.
See if I can, let's see if I can master the mic this time.
Oh, no, you're doing really well.
I'm doing, yeah. Sore back for the rest.
Oh, I know, I know.
Glenn Scholder for the record. And again, I was asked to review the application, provide comments to the commission. My comments were in my report dated.
Is this the June thirtieth?
Thirtieth, yes. And and the site plan comments start on page twelve of that report. So there were.
All right, I just want to get.
All on the same page, so to speak.
Yeah, that's always a good thing.
The first observation I wanted to make with regard to the development was regard to traffic safety. I've known Bay Hesketh and Associates for many years, a lot of respect for their work. I did notice out there on the site when I went to look at it that there is looking to the north, a curve in the road, Armco barrier and telephone poles that to me obstructed the sideline. Knowing the DOT is going to have to give a curb cut permit, we may end up with a deceleration lane or something simply because I don't understand how that's going to work. Driver's eye height and all of the other stuff that's going on with the grading. So I just want to put that onto the radar screen because there may be some other traffic concerns on the part of the commission. I'm not a traffic engineer, but you know, I I know a sideline when I see one or don't see one, I suppose. I did make a comment on the top of page thirteen about the density, but I understand that the applicant is changing the density provision in the regulation to bring the number from what was originally, I think, twelve units per gross acre to twenty-two. So that issue should be resolved in the regulation itself. Made comment number three had to do with earthwork. I think I brought to the commission's attention, there's about twelve thousand cubic yards worth of dirt that needs to be brought in. I was heartened tonight to hear the engineers and the site planners talk about the fact that they're going to be doing lifts, if you will, and compacting as they go because I think that is the right solution in this type of situation. But none of that information's really in the record. And so I think we should get from the engineer. It could be a one-page summary that simply indicates the level of compaction really related to stability. There is about seventeen feet of dirt that's going to have to go in before they put the units on the top. The next issue in my report is is one that confounds me in many different ways and has to do with the mismatch between the site plan and the architectural drawings. And so it's hard to bring this all up on the screen. But the architectural drawings that we have received have example marked all over them. Remember CNNs? What these things are in the front of the units?
Garages?
Yeah, guess what? No garages in any of these units on the site plan. And what they show here is is that I guess there's garages or garage doors. It's an architectural aesthetic with a garage behind. But there are double units. There are stacked units here, if you will, as shown in this development. So the first floor is not a garage. I don't know what it is. But if you notice this green area on the side of each drawing, it's implying that the access to the second floor units is around the back. So you would park your car in the parking lot, walk around the building up the slope to the to the entry to those units. However, if you look at the site plan, the site plan has the units on the north side at the edge of a two to one slope. And it's lower than the parking lot. So there's tremendous mismatch here between the information that's being shared with the commission. It has no basis in reality on this site. It's essentially a picture. One of these two drawings is not correct. It's either the site plan that's not right, or it's the architectural drawings that aren't right. So
Maybe trying to find.
Quite a bit of work that needs to be done here with regard to this application and the buildability of this proposal and the access to the units. Now that's going to be addressed. Issue is particularly serious, I think, because eight, sixteen, thirty units, more than half of the units. The back of the units go back doors.
Yeah.
On the top of a two to one slope, there's no, there's no.
There's also a lot of.
Or anything. It's it's kids open the door to go outside, they would fall down a two to one slope into a drainage area. So it's it's a drawing, but it's not a plan. At least I hope it's.
No, it's not an architectural.
I think there's some significant work. Plans themselves.
I was trying to find my, um. I'm trying to find the garage. I can't find the garage picture. I know I've I I but I know I've seen it. Yeah, I I know the one you're. I have the one with the.
Right there. On these small ones.
Hang on. It's in the small ones?
I got.
I got this one. I don't know what this is.
That might be.
That's, no, this is, no, these are. No, these are in the back.
Paul, I think I understand a conversation.
No.
If if I have not received the recent architectural drawings, let me get those and I'll reserve the right as Chris is.
Oh, okay, all right.
It's this one.
Oh, okay.
I think.
All right. Oh, it's part of the PowerPoint.
We don't get copies of that.
Okay.
Since my report's a month old, I thought you might have brought it to my attention before. Okay. If I'm mistaken, I apologize. I did not mean to.
No, 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 that's okay.
But I I will work with Maureen to get the more recent drawings and then I will come back to you and update the observations or concerns that I may have with that. At one time they were mismatched and maybe they're they're matched today.
Can I make a clarification? Can you tell me the eight plans were submitted that showed those changes? Are they just on the PowerPoint? I'll be out. Okay, thank you.
I retract my apology. I mean, I mean, if we're gonna have an application, we gotta have plans that actually work here, right?
PowerPoint is not submission. So that needs to be corrected.
But I also think we're three meetings in at this point in time and we're still we're still working with some pretty basic details in terms of the coordination between the plans, so. Um, I I would like to be able to stand here and say to the commission that everything kind of matches up and and really what the planning or zoning issues might be, and we're not quite there yet. I did make some comments on stormwater drainage. This is before the town hired an expert, and so I'm gonna reserve my comments, if you will, for the engineer who has this in their bailiwick. Uh, I did make some observations about some of the construction details. I think the engineer indicated that we're going to get details on the rear guard rail and the emergency access, I think. Either the details on a different sheet or something like that. I also think we might need a flare on that to also meet the turning radii for fire trucks if they have to use it, right? They did have to use them, I get caught in the in the dirt or whatever. And a final comment was just the thought that pretty unlikely that we would end with three separate parcels out there for financing and other things. So at some point in time, I don't know if the applicant would propose a consolidation plan, merge the three into one, and now we have a consolidated parcel for development. So I'll rest there. Comment if unless you have any questions from.
The area where they're going to be building that retaining wall when they put the seventeen feet of fill in. Do you feel there's going to be any impact on the property behind there that is not part of this? Development?
I mean, I think if the retaining wall. Yeah, so. It's it's a retaining wall. It's gotta be about twelve to fourteen feet, I would say, in height. Well, no, hang on, one sixty-seven, one fifty-four, yeah, maybe it's twelve to thirteen feet in height. It's gonna need to be engineered to hold that level of dirt back, but there are construction details that allow that to happen. It wouldn't be the most aesthetic approach, but I think they also indicated that it might be a more neutral earth color and it would be textured and it's not a blank concrete wall. But I I think it would be useful for us, for the commission, excuse me, to see that detail, even see a construction spec or picture or whatever to get a handle on on the type of thing that we're talking about. The engineering aspect of this is it's gonna hold back or retain the dirt. You've got the retention infiltration structures behind that underground. Um, so the engineering is really important here. Um, but aesthetically, I, you know, I I wouldn't really have an opinion on that. Thank you very much, and I guess I'll see you next week or next time as well.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brandon Hanfield with Yantick River Consultants. I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of Connecticut. And at your request, I performed a review, an civil engineering review of the the plans and information provided. Uh, you should have my letter dated July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. And similar to Mr. Chalder, I'll I'll go through the highlights of a few of the items that um, I do feel additional information is required in order to properly evaluate uh, the site plan and its success to be constructed uh, without significant changes that would um, change the layout uh, as you see it in this application. So the the first item I'll touch on is the existing conditions. Um, one item I I did not have in my packet was an existing condition survey. Um, that's licensed by a land surveyor. And it kind of dovetails with the combinations of the property at the end, as well as the easements, both existing and proposed. Um, that may impact the application. Um, so there's a fifteen-foot wide easement that goes around two sides of the property. And the execution that I agree of that easement is critical to this project being successfully built. Um, so I wasn't sure if if there's any documentation that was provided for that easement that acknowledges the work on on an abutting property. Um, that should be part of the record, so I I don't know if that was provided, but I did not see it and it should be provided to make sure the abutting owner is agreeable to that work. Again, topographic map, same thing at the existing condition survey. Um, moving down onto page two. Uh, we get into the the grading and and there's a number of um, things I addressed on the grading. Um, the walkout conditions or exposed foundations, uh, and I believe it's comment number six B. Um, it it relates to the architecture, but it also relates to how those buildings can be built. Uh, there are a change in grade from finished floor at the front where there's access to the units to the rear of up to eleven feet. Um, so that regardless of whether there's walkout or access, uh, there is a substantial grade change over the front to back of those buildings, and it's not detailed clearly how those buildings will be constructed in terms of the stories or the foundation. Um, to see if it's a four-story rear or eleven-foot exposed foundation. Um, so those details would be, I I feel would be necessary to make sure that the building you're seeing uh, and the plan accurately reflects what they will and can build. Moving down to six C, uh, there are a number of areas where there's steep slopes uh, on the property. Uh, they exceed two to one in a in a number of areas. I think I outlined at least four or five areas where the the slopes were over two to one. I acknowledge that some of the existing slopes um, are steeper than two to one currently. However, once you start to change those slopes and the stability of those slopes, somebody should certify that the the stability of those slopes is adequate. Not just for the property you're approving, but also the property that's adjacent. So in one case, on the south side, I believe there's a garage structure immediately above or on top of the steep slope behind building uh, five. And they're cutting into the toe of that slope, which is already uh, over two to one, and the proposed grades are over two to one, so. In a in a couple of areas I identified where those steep slopes should be addressed by a professional engineer on the plan and certify that the stability of the materials and the placement of the materials uh, will be stable without impacting this property or any abutters. And that does dovetail with the retaining wall question earlier. Where at the bottom of that retaining wall, you have steep slopes going immediately down to not just the property line, but the limit of the easement, which is on an abutting property. Um, so that wall will have to be constructed and then the slopes downgrade will have to be constructed to hold that wall up. And I do feel that additional certification and design review would be warranted to make sure that wall is stable. And there won't be any impact up or down grade of it. Um, the last item outside of steep slopes uh, would be sorry, I'm I'm trying to turn my light back on here. Um, the way that it's graded around the foundation, so buildings one, two, and six. Uh, I believe there's no numbers on the plan for buildings, but I believe from the phasing plan that's correct. Uh, the steep slopes go right up to the foundation without any sort of shelf along the building. Um, so placement of material at a steep slope right up to the foundation is difficult and compact appropriately, so you would probably get settlement. Um, but if you did achieve that compaction, there's still issues with maintaining the building as well as emergency access around the entire building, and that's simply just being able to walk around it. So when you have a two to one slope right up to the foundation, um, any electric utilities, gas utilities uh, are difficult to access, if at all. And uh, emergency personnel, if they need to get to the rear of the building and have to use a ladder, um, that ladder is gonna be a number of feet below the grade at the foundation just to get it up, so. And will it be stable? I don't know. So I I don't know. The the fire marshal has reviewed that condition and made sure there's adequate emergency access around it, but uh, if the if a maintenance shelf is added, that would change the grading and possibly increase the exposure of those foundations from the front to back, so. Uh, that is one thing I thought should be addressed. The next comment, I did hit on the depth of fill. Um, that's on the north side of the site. Uh, the applicant's engineer did address the proper placement of that fill. It is substantial. And I do think the uh, methods at which the that soil will be placed and compacted should be shown on the plan and clearly indicated to ensure or give some confidence that it will be done properly as settlement will be an issue if it's not. Uh, moving on to the parking and loading. Uh, I did make a comment on the number of parking spaces, which was um, discussed in the presentation. Uh, the one item I did request, it's one point six seven parking spaces per unit. Uh, it doesn't meet the regulations as currently written. Um, however, I do think it's appropriate to submit um, background information that would justify the reduction for this multifamily use, and that could come out of the I T E um, or any other um, acceptable method just to show that there are, there will be adequate parking on the site for the multifamily use. Um, in particular, because there I believe they're all two-bedroom units, so we just want to make sure there's adequate number of parking. Uh, I know that's an interior thing, however, we don't want to have a condition where the residents don't have adequate parking. Um, the next comment, I did just reference that the DOT will be reviewing this plan as part of the encroachment permit. Occasionally or typically, when when the plan will have access directly to a state road as well as additional work, including grading. Uh, those plans can be submitted to DOT on a preliminary review basis, so it could go to District One. Um, I don't know if it has been submitted, but uh, if it has, those it it would be helpful if those review comments were available just to make sure DOT is on board uh, with the method of ingress egress uh, changes to their guide rail system. And the such. Uh, vehicular circulation was presented tonight. I saw a turning movement plan. Uh, I didn't see that in my package, but would appreciate an opportunity to review it. I did see uh, the turning movements circle circulated through the site, which looked okay. Um, DOT will look at the turning movements in and out of the site. I will say uh, I saw, I believe, the outside limit of the bumper or turning wheel go over the median of the entrance and it's likely the DOT will want to see the vehicle stay entirely within lane, both inbound and outbound. And they'll also want to see that bumper stay within the single lane they're turning out into. Um, so we want to make sure that the vehicle turning off the site doesn't cross into two lanes of traffic. Uh, lighting was indicated that EverSource Electric would be designing it. I do think uh, for this application, it's warranted to have some level of information. Uh, not just location of the lights, but height. Um, indication that they do meet the dark sky initiative or uh, some measure to to show that all the lights will be downlights. I'm sure they will be, but having that on the plan, I think, is is appropriate. Uh, there are a number of comments on erosion controls. The the major ones really are related to the slopes, again, the stability of those slopes and how they apply to the two thousand and two guidelines, I think are appropriate. Um, there are measures in those guidelines that show which slopes need to be stabilized and how. Um, and again, somebody should review those stabilization measures to make sure anything of two to one or steeper are properly stabilized during and after construction. One item I did see is at the, I believe it's the north and west perimeter of the site. Uh, the silt fence is right at the bottom of steep slopes, right up against the limit of easement. And during construction, as that fill is placed and lifts, it'll be nearly impossible to get down. Well, not impossible, it'll be very difficult for the contractor to get down to and suitably maintain after storm events or even uh, any event. So typically, there would be some way of getting down to that, whether it's uh, a temporary easement that goes beyond the fifteen-foot easement that so the contractor can go along the base of the slope and re-staple the the silt fence and um, basically remove any material that does go does go down those those deep slopes. Uh, there's some other measures I do think are warranted, including intermediate uh, silt fence and silt traps, really to control erosion because the the property to the north and west is the same owner. And most of the water will go towards their property. And it would be helpful to have other measures beyond just silt fence to to collect and ensure that no siltation uh, goes off the property limits or within the easement. Uh, let's see here. Um, stormwater management, I won't go into the details too much. Um, I'll I'll highlight a few of the the major things I would like to see some more information on. Going back to the grading, again, um, both systems or both detention systems are, I believe, near or at existing grade. And I believe the soils in that area are good. I think they're they're gravelly and granular soils. And I understand the methods. Um, the concern is I'm building one, the the proximity to that building. Uh, I believe it's less than five feet at one corner. There's some fill on top of the system, uh, but really the 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 building itself is a number of feet above um, that system, and I wasn't sure of the interaction of the footings in close proximity to the voids based underground. And I I would like the engineer record to take a look at that and see if additional separation can be provided uh, or details provided to show how those two elements, the foundation and the drainage system interact um, to ensure there isn't any uh, potential for failure of the ground between the two. I know houses aren't very heavy, um, and there is a uh, a footing, however, a six-foot pipe is a relatively big void to have that close to a footing in a building that's occupied. Similarly, the other detention bay. Similarly, the other detention basin is behind the retaining wall. I don't know that there's any concern for hydrostatic loading because I think again, the soils are very good. I do think there's some details warrant, warranted. To show how the retaining wall will interact with the large pipes because that retaining wall is high. I don't know if GeoGrid will be used, but if it is, it's likely gonna encroach into that area. And we want to make sure that there's sufficient width for the GeoGrid to be placed and stabilize it, or even the backflow of another type of wall. Whether it's a cantilever or gravity, we want to make sure that that wall is independent. Of the stormwater system and that there can be no possible issues. The last item I'll touch on, and I skipped over it, I apologize, but item B, eighteen B. Is the front of the site. Along Berlin Turnpike, there's a, the very large depression. I read the wetland or non-wetland report and I understand it's not a wetland, however, it does take discharge piping from the D O T right of way. That, that piping discharged to an open depression and then it heads north to a head wall that carries the water further north within the D O T right of way. Currently in, under existing conditions, there's, there's a topographic saddle about five or six feet. Above that head wall or above the flow line of that head wall. And if that pipe were to clog or the water would be too much for that pipe to handle. It would stack up in that depression and there would be a hydraulic relief to the west where water wouldn't. Continue to stack up. It would actually flow overland in a westerly direction. The planet as it's shown now adds about, I think 11 or 12 feet of fill to that depression. Or not the depression to the saddle. So it, it pretty much eliminates that hydraulic relief. And could result in substantial ponding right adjacent to the D O T road and behind building six. The information wasn't provided to have the comfort level that that's okay. So I don't know if that area will pond up. I don't know if it ever does. But I do think someone should take a hard look at that to make sure that A, the pipe can handle the flow. And there's no impact to it. And B, if the pipe were to clog, there's not going to be any catastrophic issues to building six. The D O T's road or the new road that's being proposed across it. So there's information I did request. In, in this letter. Let's see. And then other items really are, are asking for additional information in the report to just to check the input and output data. To be comfortable with the results. And I'd be happy to discuss it within the engineer. Or, or, or receive a response that provides the information so I can review it. And if any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I, the question I have more is for to, to staff. Did you have this report at all on hand? That this gentleman has just reviewed and where did we find it?
This was. In your package at the last meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. No, I have everything from all the meetings, so. I was trying to, yeah, go ahead and ask a question if you're looking at while.
I have a, a couple of questions I see as I go on through these. Preliminary construction. I guess these are not going to be stick built. They're going to be modular units. Is that true? Okay. And your first floor, one bedroom units. Six hundred and ninety square foot.
It's like this. I'm sorry. I'm just trying to help others.
Seems to be a small unit for one bedroom unit. Second floor. Second floor, I guess, is the start of the two family, two, two bedroom units. The first. The second floor is the living room kitchen area. A half bath, I think it is. And your third floor. Is the two bedrooms for the two bedroom unit. Is that correct? So you see only, you're only going up three floors. Originally was four floors when it was brought to us. You're only going up three floors right now. The, the bottom unit is a 690 square foot, one bedroom unit. And the upper units are. Almost 1400 square foot or 1380.
Patrick Snow for the record, did I just address those? Yes, the first floor. Units are that square footers that you mentioned. And as an opinion, I do not think that's small for a one bedroom. And you are correct. We said in our zone text amendment, it was four stories. We may measure from the back with the walkout. Well, they would be entering and going only up three stories. You are correcting the analysis.
I know we got a lot of information and I just, I just located the engineer's report. So I, I'm looking forward to. Matching my handwritten notes to the engineer's report. To make sure that I.
One other question on modular unit. I know they can be built real quick. I've seen them done it's per box, seven days. And I'm just wondering. If these, all these boxes are go be delivered at the same time. Or what? So you got the. Seven, seven units on the first floor, seven, uh, seven boxes on the. Second floor, seven bucks on the, on the, so you got the. Whatever, three times seven, twenty one boxes just for one building. Are they all coming the same time or they go be, they go be coming in? Phasing in or what's, yeah.
As far as the construction process better, I think Casey, my partner is part of the better at the modular, but my understanding is they do come in. Not all at the same time. They're staged. They come in, the crane puts them in place and then you tie them together. So it might be over two or three days, but so when you say same time, they're not going to stack them and leave them on site. But they will bring them, put them in place and the next set comes in, we bring them, put them in place, time together. That's how, that's how the building would go.
I understand how the module units, so I, I built modular, so I do know the process. But. Because they are finished units. They cannot be exposed to the weather. So if you do the first floor. You gotta put the rest of them up. Right away because the, then the roof goes on. Okay. Just for weather. So they have to be, you know, craned in. Pretty quick unless you got a. Time span of three or four days of fun, good weather.
I understood that they will be quick and they'll be.
Because they're finished units. And. You know, it's, it's a great system. It's a good, good system. It's actually better than stick built. But it's a complicated system. So, and, and it's also. Complicated for the building engineers, which in the town of Berlin. Do not know modular units. The only modular units they knew is once I built in the town of Berlin. And they didn't know those. So I'm, I'm just saying that the building department will have. An engineering. Thing about the, the modulators, not, not having the modulators.
I'll answer that, that we do have professionals that do this and this isn't their first time doing a modular and they will be. But we thank you for your concern.
Yeah, we have a lot of, lot of issues open here. All right. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address this commission regarding this application? Is there anyone online who wishes to? Okay, I'm going to come back to the commission, but I. Okay, go ahead. Diane, would you want to? Oh, okay. Very smooth, I guess.
Ready to, right. If you had any questions, no. I don't want to interrupt it. I, I always had pen in hand and I was ready to.
All right. My only comment was going to be that I think that. It sounds like there's more information that we need. To have an accurate representation of what this application is. And that I think we need to continue this just so that we have an opportunity. So that's.
Okay, I, I. Oh, go ahead. Well.
Just going to ask if we, if our engineer, Mr. Bill can contact Mr. Handfield, your engineering consultant, to just ensure that. It's going to, we're going to try to get responses in two weeks, which is a short time period. We get you as much as we can within the two weeks, but I think we can expedite that. Mr. Bill can call Mr. Handfield. Just clarify what information he is looking for so that we can get that not only to him, but also to the commission and then. So I just wanted to ask permission to do that as opposed to just instructing him to do that. So anyways.
Well, what we've done. Well, I certainly don't want to. More to say. Um, in the past, what we've done is orchestrated that through the office so that the staff is also. And we've had the Zoom calls in order to work through. Specific issues. I'm not sure, and I defer to attorney Capola as to. What may or may not need to be in the transparency of an open meeting.
Okay. Anything you want to add?
I, I don't have any objection at all. It is certainly during the pendency of an application, it is common. For the town, whether, whether it's on staff, engineer or consulting engineer to meet. With the project engineer to make sure that you, you know, the best project is proposed as possible. And iron out some of these things. So, you know, Brandon's report has been out there for some time. So I just want to make. I just. I just want to make sure, was there any information in the PowerPoint that addressed some of his concerns again? Were, were there any drawings or anything just to draw his attention? I think we need to make sure that he gets a copy of the PowerPoint. So he looks at at least that in advance of their meeting. So if you want to just note for the record, you know, so that he knows. You know what you're representing is responsive. If you could do that, I think that would be helpful tonight as well.
So can we forward our point, which. You have, that the commission has and with any comments and then we could copy. Or ring on that with any questions and then, and then if. You would like to facilitate a call. Then we, we can arrange that too with, with, with Maureen.
Brian, could you mute your phone, your device? Brian Miller.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
We, we, we will do that and endeavor to get that information to you sooner than later for the next meeting. But thank you. I wasn't sure how, how you handled it. That makes sense. So we look forward to getting that information into you and circling back after you've had time to look through the information that has been submitted today. And we, I presume we'll see you in two weeks.
The seventeen. I don't want to give you the wrong date. That's why I looked. I said, oh. It can be, it can be. Okay. I think Diane, did you? Were you in the process of asking?
I was saying about to make a motion to continue this.
Okay. Terrific. We have a motion to continue. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Miller. Thank you. And further discussion, all those in favor? Aye, this is supposed to move. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That's that. That's that. Okay. So up is the application for the Little House LLC prepared by Christopher J. Smith, a squire. Alteron Pearson LLC submitted pursuant to Connecticut general statutes eight dash thirty G affordable housing, land use appeals. Item I is the, or item one would be the proposed zone text amendment to create a new. Eleven. Dash E E or planned residential infill development. Inclusionary multifamily residential use with the housing opportunity or workforce housing component. Okay. And. Welcome back.
Can I ask a question first?
Yeah.
On this. Application. If we are. Being. In court with this object. I don't know. We should be touching this until court decides what's going to happen. We haven't, it hasn't been referred back to us, right? Yet.
This is a new application. It has no bearing whatsoever on the pendency of the litigation. They've submitted a new application and you need to. Act on the application. In, in the usual course of business. Yeah, it does not. Does not, it, it does not have the effect, the fact that they submit an appeal with regard to the, the particular property. Does not bar them from submitting an, another application for the property.
My understanding, it, it, this is a 20 unit application. The other unit, the application was 20 unit application. And, and. If the application was denied, there has to be. Substantial difference in the applications. To be submitted again, if it's not, you know, it's not, there's no substantial. Difference in this application than the one that we denied. That's another question is.
Well, I, I, first of all, I, I don't know that I agree with that. And secondly, this is an eight thirty G application that's proposing a new text amendment. And has a different site plan and you cannot refuse to hear it. It would be a violation of the applicant's due process rights to do so.
Take your advice.
All right. Okay, so let's see.
Evening, Adam Chairwoman, members of the commission, professional staff, sound attorney. And invited consultants, commission consultants. For the record, my name is Chris Smith. And I appear before you this evening on behalf of Little House Living LLC. A lot of what you're going to hear, we heard with the other one. I have to say this is my first time where I presented. Two applications pursuant to eight thirty G with the same commission during the same timeframe. So. Bear with me and I will bear with the commission as we go through. Generating a, a separate record for these two applications. And at the outset, I understand the notice letters went out, the sign was posted. I. Did ask that the. Again, the, all, all the material, including the letters, motions, the meeting video and the transcripts concerning the initial moratorium issue with, which did involve this application. That the commission dealt with. Couple of months ago, be incorporated into the record of this matter. I think it would be part of it, but I'm just respectfully requesting that. And again, I, I, I will ask for, just for the record, that there be a combined hearing. On both of these applications. And I understand, I presume that the commission will be consistent. With its prior decision to, with the other application for nineteen oh six. Berlin Turnpike holds a separate hearing, one on the text amendment, one on the site plan, but I just wanted to. Ask that, be clear on the record. Thank you, Adam Chairwoman. For clarifying that. And I would like to introduce the members of the team. We do have a slight change. We have Giuliano and Associates LLC is the engineering term, Christopher Giuliano. Zachary Georgina, our traffic engineer is Scott Hesketh. From F A Hesketh and Associates. Our planning consultant is Brian Miller from the Miller Planning Group. And, and then again, we have on behalf of the owner applicant, Little House Living LLC, Mr. Patrick Snow attending this evening. What I would like to do, because it is a separate record, is walk the commission. Through the proposal as I did with the, the other one. For nineteen oh six and I'm, I'm just going to say sixteen seventy six from now on, because that's, that's really, this is, the record is for this application. Which again is a two-part application for a. Twenty unit multifamily residential community development on real property known as sixteen seventy six Berlin Turnpike. I would like to indicate that it's my understanding in the prior application. That I think it might have been submitted as a twenty unit proposal. I think two of the units were eliminated through that process. But. Uh, but um, and there has been changes to this one relative to that one. And as Attorney Capola indicated, this this is, uh, has been filed under section eight dash thirty G. So it's not the same application. It has a um, a an eight thirty G component, which was not included with the prior application. So I would respectfully submit to Commissioner Zigma that the um, there has been a substantial potential change relative to the prior application that was denied and is under repeal. So again, we have a two-part application, text amendment and a site plan application for twenty-unit residential community located on a real property known as sixteen seventy six Berlin Turnpike. Again, the community will provide for a housing opportunity, workforce housing component, specifically thirty percent or six of the units will be rented to individuals or families at the eighty percent, sixty percent median income level. And it will be, the property will be deed restricted relative to these units for a period of forty years as provided by section eight thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes entitled Affordable Housing Land Use Appeals Procedure. And two-part application, focus this presentation on the text amendment. And I will provide an overview of the actual proposal, the two components. And then we'll walk you through quickly, uh, the zone text, which we have seen already. Then I'll turn the presentation over to Mr. Miller. Uh, and um, he can go through some of the information that he had gone through, some of the slides on relative to uh, your P O C D, Affordable Housing Plan, and some uh, information concerning financials with the eight thirty G component. So as far as my presentation, I'll be referring to three documents. The first is the cover letter. This one is dated May fifteen, twenty twenty-three. And in the ray down, second from the bottom above the notice that it's filed under eight thirty G, makes reference to sixteen seventy-six. Also be making reference to the zone text amendment. And Brian may be uh, making reference to his affordability plan.
Please let me know when it's, when you want the PowerPoint that um, um, Mr. Snow sent me today.
I think we're all set, and I think we'll hold off Maureen. I probably won't need that till.
Okay.
This presentation. So if that helps with the screen.
I'm just trying to prepare the things you want me to share before beforehand.
So again, referring to the cover letter of May fifteen, twenty twenty-three, it's a two-part application, and uh, there is a zone text amendment. Create a new section eleven, quote, planned residential infill development, inclusionary multifamily residential use with a housing housing opportunity or workforce housing component. End of quote, it's for a twenty-unit multifamily residential community. The owner of the subject property, sixteen seventy-six Berlin Turnpike is Little House Living LLC, and they are, will be the developer of the set-aside development as provided by uh, section eight dash thirty G. Uh, just a quick overview, and I think I have to do this because it's part of, again, it's part of the text amendment. We'll be revisiting it with the site plan, but just a quick overview because the letter is part of the record uh, for the text amendment application. Subject property, which the zone text amendment will apply. Price is approximately one point nine five acres. It's located within the Berlin Turnpike One Zone District, or your BT one. A zone, historically, it's accommodated a motel use. The associated structures with that motel use were recently demolished and removed from the property. There's frontage on the Berlin Turnpike, and there is access to both public water and public sewer. There is both adequate water and sewer to serve the proposed residential community. Proposal involves twenty-two bedroom dwellings or apartments. There's an onsite driveway with associated parking and access on the Berlin Turnpike. The internal driveway system will be private. There, as you'll hear from, well, there's a relatively low volume of peak hour traffic associated with the residential community. Local road network is capable of accommodating the site relative to traffic volumes, and there is sufficient intersection site distance or ISD at the subject property's access driveways. And these issues
You have a plan for it.
Are addressed in a um, report entitled Traffic Impact Statement issued by F A Hesketh and Associates dated March eighth, last year, twenty twenty-three, which was submitted with the application the site plan component with the next public portion, the next public hearing of your Mr. Scott Hesketh. His report relative to uh, his study. It was also submitted with this application and the other one, uh, the stormwater management plan, the drainage report, the stormwater management system's been designed to address stormwater quality and peak flows. Uh, the stormwater from the uh, community will be collected and treated, prepared to discharge. Uh, the subject property's existing stormwater runoff is currently not treated. There are, there will be detention and infiltration measures that comply with best management practices and will not result in an adverse impact to a substantial interest. Post-construction peak flows will be reduced from the current conditions. Will accommodate the two, ten, twenty-five, and one hundred-year storm events as required by your town regulations and is designed in accordance with the Connecticut Deep two thousand and four Stormwater Quality Manual. These issues again are addressed in a report entitled Stormwater Drainage Report here by Giuliano Associates LLC dated April fourteen, twenty twenty-three, which is also submitted. And I would respectfully request be included within the uh, record for the zone text amendment. Subject property has access to existing sewer uh, and uh, is within a sewer service area. Wetlands permit was approved by the Town of Berlin Inland Wetlands Water Courses Commission for regulated activities associated with the fire site development uh, for an eighteen-dwelling residential community that was uh, submitted to this commission and was referenced earlier in in the commencement of the public hearing. Wetlands approval is designated application uh, twenty-two dash oh two capital W, and that was approved on May third twenty twenty-two, last year. Regulated activities proposed with the current site development are substantially and materially the same, but within the scope of those regulated activities approved last May, uh, twenty twenty-two by your wetlands commission with application twenty-two dash oh two W. However, we have submitted an application to your wetlands commission requesting either of approval uh, for the regulated activities, which we don't think is really necessary, but we have asked already finding that uh, the regulated activities associated with this site development are substantially and materially the same or within the scope of those regulated activities approved with the prior app, uh, prior permit May of twenty twenty-two. And if the commission doesn't feel that uh, that's the case, then we have submitted a formal application, asking them for approval of activities associated with this site development. Uh, we did commence the hearing on the eleventh of July. Thought it had been continued, uh, but we are going back there at the beginning of September. I think it's September twelfth. To continue public hearing on that. As uh, as you're aware, the uh, proposal does include a housing opportunity component, six of the dwellings. Be designated for families at, or individuals at the eighty or sixty percent median income level. Three of the units will be for individuals and families at the eighty seven median income and level, and three of the dwellings will be for individuals or families at six percent, sixty percent uh, median income level. Uh, these rental prices, and you'll hear some of this information uh, from uh, Mr. Miller shortly. These rental prices target families with incomes comparable to many of Berlin's municipal and board education employees. Again, there will be a deed restriction for the forty years as required by section eight dash thirty G. My client, as I've indicated, is not willing to go beyond that forty-year time period, which is is required for an eight thirty G application. Uh, an affordability plan was submitted. I would ask that all of that be included in the record for this text amendment, as with the uh, the other matter that we have. There is a housing opportunity need. Uh, the so-called ten percent list that is maintained by the Connecticut Department of Housing uh, does provide that or indicate that Berlin at the moment is at eight point eight percent, which does entitle uh, this application uh, to be filed with the commission as submitted. That's just an overview of of that proposal. What I'd like to do is very quickly walk you through the post-text amendment with the latest revision date of, I believe it's July twenty twenty-three. I think everything's July twenty twenty-three. Uh, we do provide there is a, um, again, it's new section, Roman numeral eleven, double E. Quote, planned residential infill development, inclusionary multifamily residential use with a housing opportunity or workforce housing component. Per section, intent purposes, basically to provide for redevelopment and adaptive reuse of underperforming properties located along the Berlin Turnpike or Route fifteen uh, here in the town of Berlin, to provide a uh, housing opportunities for mixed income developments for moderate and low-income households, for housing choice and economic diversity, and to utilize the existing structure, infrastructure along the Berlin Turnpike to promote neighborhood planning uh, as suggested in your plan of conservation and development that Mr. Miller will touch upon shortly relative to the southern part of uh, the Berlin Turnpike where the property is located. Uh, there's a section with permitted permitted uses. Uh, that's um, page two. Just quickly, we do provide requirements. And again, this is a, section eight dash thirty G does require that draft regulations be submitted to the commission for your consideration that would govern this application that's being filed along with it uh, for a a set-aside development. So that's why you have this application uh, for the text amendment in front of you. There are minimum site requirements in EE three, EE four, bulk area dimensional and coverage requirements, other standards in EE five governing private driveways, parking requirements, even signage. After that, there's a reference to documents being submitted. And and that's an EE six, EE seven, traffic study can be requested. We did provide one uh, with the application. And um, application requirements that would be site plan. If typically, if this were not an eight thirty G application, if you did require, uh, if if a separate excavation permit was required, uh, this this exempts uh, an applicant from having to file a separate application. However, any of the issues associated with that would have to be addressed uh, through the application process. Uh, and I think that that's, that's what this regular, that's what this provision provides for. E nine, just the requirements, it makes it very clear and and ten that uh, an application filed pursuant to this, uh, the zoning, the zoning regulation would have to comply with section eight dash thirty G and the income requirements as calculated and provided for uh, by uh, section eight dash thirty G. And as I indicated with the, let me just, just quickly. I didn't do this at the beginning of the last one, but I did it at the beginning of the hearing tonight. There we go. So Mr. Miller's uh, report that we stated yesterday that you just received uh, should be part of the record. His response was in response to uh, Mr. Chalder's a report that did deal with both applications for the two separate properties. So uh, that should be included, and I presume is, as part of the record in this matter. And uh, just for the record, I would simply just like to read as I did with the prior matter. Uh, the uh, from the first page going on to the top of the second page from Mr. Miller's report. Uh, the uh, that's there, so you can consider that between now and your next meeting. So as indicated in Mr. Miller's report of August second, twenty twenty-three, of the Miller Planning Group Land Use Solutions uh, under general comment, this is again in response to Mr. Chalder's report to you concerning the text amendment. Quote, section eight thirty G requires at minimum a draft zoning regulation be submitted as part of an eight thirty G proposal. The owner applicant has determined to submit a full petition for zone text amendment consistent with the site of consistent, excuse me, consistent with the site development plan for both nineteen oh six Berlin Turnpike sixteen seventy-six, seventy-six Berlin Turnpike. Just this property. The owner applicant respectfully submits that the zone text amendment provides a set of requirements that govern the residential communities going forward. Uh, this provides the commission and the town with a baseline for each community. Zone text amendment provisions also provide certainty for potential lenders concerning funding. If the commission would like to amend the zone text amendment, the applicant has no objection so long as the zone text amendment is consistent with the site development proposal. If a change to the zone text amendment results in the proposed site development either property being non-compliant with the text amendment, then the applicant will not agree to such change. In addition, the applicant will not agree to a change that requires something of the applicant that is not provided by section eight dash thirty G. For example, the applicant will not agree to restricting the properties or residential communities to deed restrictions longer than forty years required, the the forty years required by section eight dash thirty G, nor subject the approval of any administrator of of the affordability plan to possible commission veto. The commission will receive annual, annual reports confirming compliance with section eight dash thirty G. If the community is not compliant, then the commission has all the zoning enforcement powers delegated to the commission by section eight dash twelve. Therefore, the applicant agrees to any reasonable changes to the zone text amendment the long as the change, one, does not render the site development plan for either property non-compliant and two, does not require more from the applicant than is required by section eight dash thirty G. Continuing on to the top of the second page of Mr. Miller's report. If the commission believes that only a site plan application is required for the site development proposal for each property that his own text amendment is not necessary. If the commission states this on the record, the applicant would consider withdrawing the formal petition for zone text amendment and would just proceed with the site plan application, understanding if it were the commission's position that if that were to be approved, that's all you need to go and secure your uh, appropriate building permits at the next level. That, those would be, that would be the only approval required uh, from the commission relative to the uh, site development proposal. What I'd like to do now is uh, if Brian, Mr. Miller is still there, I think I see him uh, with his freshly cut lawn.
He's still out in the sun.
Must be in Arizona.
If uh, I I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Miller and he can walk you through um, uh, his slides that have been prepared and are part of the PowerPoint presentation. And um, you know, I know Brian, uh, Mr. Miller, as with the, with the other matter, because this, uh, your responses to Mr. Chalder's report uh, was just recently filed and and uh, the commission will need additional time as well as Mr. Chalder to digest your responses. So I don't think that that would be necessary unless the commission would like to have Mr. Miller walk through those, to go through those at this point. We would just focus on our uh, the initial presentation that Brian was gonna make.
Okay, uh, Brian Miller, uh, Miller Planning Group, uh, for the racket. You may have seen this before. Um, but uh, we'll, we'll go through it again. The uh, again, this is from uh, the kind of sister development here, nineteen oh six, uh, twenty bed, uh, twenty units. Once again, um, the Housing Affordability Plan, um, which um, was critiqued by uh, Glenn Chalder, and I did respond to that also in, as well as the uh, his comments on the zoning regulation in that document that you just received. But once again, I um, if there's any questions further on, after you've had a chance to look at it, we, I'd be happy to um, try to answer them. Um, again, the uh, maximum income uh, for the sixty percent is up to sixty thousand eight hundred and four dollars. Um, and the, uh, for the eighty percent, eight, eighty-one thousand seventy-two dollars, the rental levels, eleven seventy for the sixty percent, this is for two-bedroom. This is for two bedroom apartments and fourteen thirty-six for the eighty percent. I I mentioned that most. Of the town employees in in this situation, if they needed a two bedroom apartment. Their salaries alone would make them eligible for the set aside affordable units. And again. Including mid-management, which is mental and and really operating the town. As well as the white collar and the blue collar. And police officers through the third year. So that demonstrates is always in, there certainly is a need for that. For those type of rental units in in the town. Again, more of the mid-management, again, these are officials that many of you deal with on a on a regular basis. And are really responsible for, you know, operating the town. And then even now we on the Board of Education. A great many teachers are would also qualify. So so, you know, the the need is generated by the people that working for the town of Berlin for. On that behalf of the citizens. The affordability plans again recognized a need for. For more housing, particularly for low income seniors. Again, this this housing certainly could fill at least a portion of that. And then quote again from the twenty thirteen plan of conservation and development, talking about. How the goal for a long time has been redevelopment of the Berlin Turnpike. And that residential development, which started many years ago, was kind of the spark for. Beneficial development on the turnpike. And this what being proposed to you here is would continue that with kind of a low scale. Rental development that would fulfill the need for housing as well as the. The overall development objectives of the community, the. The cost burden, as I discussed previously, it's when rental housing, when housing. Takes away needs more than thirty percent of the monthly income. And it's quite a bit of a housing cost burden within the town of Berlin. And again, the the whole affordable housing plan. Is to achieve the additional affordable housing units in Berlin will meet the needs of all town residents. And result in a total share of affordable housing that exceeds ten percent. I would tend that this is really a an ideal way to. Help you get up to that. To that level and therefore then you wouldn't need to be doing this type of development again for at least a certain amount. And finally, from the plan. That shows that a lot, much of the development has been up in the north end of the turnpike. And as well as on the extreme south end, it's starting to fill in a little bit in the middle here. And while some more commercial development is in the north end and at several several nodes. Along the southern part of the turnpike. Read the residential development of a slightly higher density than you have. And then neighbor in the surrounding neighborhoods is probably one of the best ways that you can. Enhance the the area along the turnpike without any adverse impact. And I I just also want to mention, I was happy to hear that that first. Discussion about the whole redevelopment of Kensington Center. And, you know, it's something that we have looked at for years and that it's it's starting to come to fruition. It's just remarkable to me and it's. And frankly, I haven't been down driven down Farmington Avenue, though I'm gonna do it soon to see the changes. But this is the Berlin Turnpike also, which is the other major corridor along with the town. And I think that this type of housing, although the situation is different. That the remedy to kind of strengthen the development pattern and provide for the town needs. Part of what we're proposing here. And again, looking at the your current draft update, I don't know if you've adopted it yet. I apologize for that. I had actually put this together about a month ago. And it talks about achieving additional housing units, a goal for housing. That will meet the needs of all town residents and result in a total share of affordable housing, again, the ten percent. So I believe that what we're proposing here does fit into your housing as well as your. Comprehensive plan of conservation and development. So. Again, thank you. And if you have any questions, of course, I'll be available to listen to answer them today. Or if you have to even look at my responses to Glenn's. Comments on the zoning as well as the. Housing affordability plan. And by the way, most of the what Glenn's comments on their housing affordability plan. I I agreed with and I made the necessary investments to the HAP. Which is in the documents that you just received yesterday. So. Thank you again, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions at this time? I know the hour is getting late, so.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, anyone have any questions? No, not this time. Okay. All right, so.
Oh, and in conclusion, I just would like to point out that although a requirement for a text amendment under eight thirty G is not subject to the standard. Zone text amendment review, including consistency, whether the proposal is consistent with your P O C D and affordable housing plan. Thought that it was important to. Have Mr. Miller look at those two plans and to report the consistencies. With this text amendment with of the text amendment with the with those two plans. In conclusion, I know we'll be coming back, but in conclusion, I just respectfully submit that the zone text amendment. Does comply and satisfy section eight thirty G and it's also. Respectfully submit under the traditional zone text amendment, looking at his own text amendment with the first item on the agenda that's not an eight thirty G. I respectfully submit that it's consistent with eight dash two, which is the first prong. A standard review that in that it promotes affordable housing opportunities. It's secondly, it's consistent with your regs, in particular, your your recently adopted section eleven special regulation subsection. Double D plan residential infill development adopted in May of twenty thousand and twenty-one. P O C D and your portable housing plan. And finally, number three, third component. I would respectfully submit that the zone text amendment does not result in an adverse impact to the public health and safety. So that concludes our initial presentation relative to the zone text amendment. And I understand that we'll be coming back. For a continuation of that once everybody's had an opportunity to review, in particular, Mr. Miller's comments. Chalder's report.
Okay.
We've actually heard your comments from the first night of public hearing concerning the other matters. So we were able to. Combine some of that with Mr. Miller's response. Do you have any further questions? That again, that concludes our presentation on the.
All right, okay, attorney. Paula, did you want to add something?
Only that. I know that the hours late, but there are members of the public present who can possibly online as well. That may want to address you with regard to this. So. Don't forget to allow them the opportunity.
I will not forget them. Thank you for reminding me. I just wanted to make sure we're all okay with the commission at this point. So now members of the public regarding the text amendment. Just the text amendment. Do you have any comments in this? Okay. Hearing none on the text. Oh, okay. We're talking about the text amendment. Okay. So you reserve it or you're gonna come up or? Okay.
Linda Allstrand, forty-eight Holy Court. So basically, nothing's changed from last time with. Same text amendment, everything in there.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
It's just that we're here in public hearing right now.
So I said some of this last time, I'm gonna say some of it again. I stand here tonight incredulous regarding the bulk area dimensional and coverage requirements. Proposed in this text amendment for inclusionary multifamily residential use with a housing opportunity or workforce housing component. Minimum front setback is ten feet, which leaves no physical protection from the approximate sixteen thousand vehicles. Traveling south daily on the Berlin Turnpike at speeds upwards of fifty miles an hour. What would be the consequences if a vehicle veered off the turnpike and plowed into units? Are people with only ten feet of wiggle room? The applicant certainly doesn't care about resident safety. The minimum side setback is ten feet, a ridiculous buffer for commercial and residential neighbors. The minimum rear setback is five feet, which is laughable. Again, I said this last time, three, you're looking at a five foot buffer. These proposed setbacks are foolish and incomprehensible. Original BT one zone buffers of thirty-five feet on the turnpike, side buffers of twenty-five feet. And the fifty foot rear buffer when abutting residential should remain in place. All parties are then protected. The proposal calls for cramming a maximum of twenty-two units on an acre. How does this enhance resident health, safety and quality of life? I, okay, there I've got here, the maximum building height is four and a half stories. It's actually less than that. Well, I don't know, because somewhere else come to think of it. So the maximum building height is four and a half stories. According to Google, one story is generally fourteen feet in height. These buildings would be sixty-three feet tall. These are high rise buildings. Maximum impervious coverage is ninety percent of the gross lot area. This proposed requirement is absurd. This is a parking lot with some grass framing the boundaries. There is no room for infiltration systems or for stormwater to naturally be dispersed into the soil. This would lead to catastrophic flooding and erosion issues for the wetlands of Butters and the neighborhood. Where is the quality of life of twenty-two units jammed together on an acre? Building sixty-three feet tall and virtually no open space. This would be reminiscent. The crime ridden high rises built in the nineteen sixties and seventies. We want to thank the town for hiring Mr. Chalder. To assess the proposed text amendment and the nineteen oh six and sixteen seventy-six Berlin Turnpike site plans. His expertise, comments and recommendations are invaluable. So I I was going to talk about that, you know, that the applicant hadn't hadn't responded. Mr. Chalder's, you know, recommendations, but apparently they did yesterday. So there again. Yes, I've seen that stuff. That's basically it. Okay, terrific. Thank you. Anyone else? Just so I give you some time. Okay.
Hi there, Petra Riley, Peter Parle one hundred, Peter Parle Row here.
Hi, welcome.
Nice to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you for your patience, all of you. And I know.
It's been long.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make this shirt and sweeten it. It's really redundant from what I said last time. Hopefully, the proposal, the proposed planned infill text amendment addressed at the last meeting. Of seven twenty will be denied. There's nothing positive in the text amendment that is benefit. For our town of Berlin. Or the people living in the proposed development. With all due respect. In my view, this proposed proposal benefits the developer only. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Sherry Rice, thirty-eight Holy Court. Again, I there is some confusion as to the topic. So I will try to keep my statements briefed due to the lateness of the hours, hopefully coherent.
Yeah.
So in the last meeting, when we were talking about the text amendment, there was a statement made. And I believe I heard it correctly, that the purpose of the workforce first housing in the is to be scattered over area of town. This text amendment is addressing two properties that are. Point four. Miles away from each other. That's seven, potentially seventy-two units in a point. Point four miles of each other. Affordable housing that has been stated before workforce housing, these are your studios, your one bedrooms, often in downtown areas, which is not the Berlin Turnpike. There is no mass transit, busway, train stations. So how this fits into that? Proposal, I don't understand. And again, you know, the twenty-two units on the one acre is just a very large amount. Of housing on those small areas. I would, again, like Petra said, I would. Respectively. Hope that the town could consider denying of the text amendment change for this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, yes, sir.
You're John Sizdowski. I own the Berlin Auto Center right next door.
Oh, hi.
The south end. I'm not opposed to constructing housing there. But it's just the amount of homes they're gonna put in there. It's just overwhelming. And I think it was a ninety percent coverage. Not mistaken. Just where's the groundwater go? Where does everything go? I mean, why have that much coverage? Is it quality of life in Berlin? Most of this will be had here. Hopefully keep that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? You want to go again? Okay, and then I think we have representative Veach online, but. Hold on, she just wants to tag on. Go ahead. You you can finish your second thought.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Sherry Rice, thirty-eight Holy Court. Again, with what Linda had said and John even said, the setbacks amount that that are listed in this text amendment. As a homeowner, Linda is my neighbor seventeen feet. I cannot put anything within seventeen feet of her property without her permission. And we're looking at five foot setbacks, again, the size of Linda. And these properties are being.
We're gonna measure her out now.
Right? And they're they're ten feet apart and potentially four and a half stories, which. In certain areas, that's that's a brick wall. You can drive down the Berlin Turnpike and see these. Large wall structures that are just. You know, covering everything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now to Representative Donna Veach, who's joining us.
Again, I I apologize. I know it's late and I I stepped out to get home to jump on. And so I missed part of the presentation. I just want to be clear, we are talking about twenty-two units on a one acre lot. And a height of sixty-three feet tall roughly. Can can I just verify that that's what we're talking about here?
Maureen, do you want to just tackle that one?
Yeah, that's. Believe the way the amendment currently reads, it's been modified a couple of times, but I'm just flipping through it and I believe so. We'll have it in front of me.
But that's the proposal anyway.
So I have the revised July twenty twenty-three. Draft. I'm just gonna go straight to the bulk table. Which has a maximum building height of forty-five feet or four and a half stories. So I wanted to clarify that. Again, the applicant is here if they had further revisions or. I'm reading them to missing any provisions, they can further correct me. Because, you know.
Yes.
Regulation has cross references in it and sometimes you miss. Because, you know, regulation has cross-references in it, and sometimes you miss a nuance. And the maximum number of multifamily dwellings shall not exceed 22 dwellings or units per one gross acre.
Twenty-two units on an acre of land?
Yeah. Oh, you're frozen.
I'm sorry. How do you get, I'm just trying to wrap my head, and I've been behaving most of the evening biting my tongue at times.
Yeah.
Twenty-two units in a one-acre lot. I think it's insane. Okay.
All right.
I'm not gonna beat this to mute me, but thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All right, anyone else really quick? All right, I, again, we're in a situation where we've got a lot of stuff to take, yeah, and the hour is getting late, so what's the consensus? Do we wanna continue on?
I'll make a motion to continue this.
All right, thank you. Motion to continue by Ms. Jorsy. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Zigma for the discussion, and all those in favor, I, okay, let's move on. All right, the next part is the application for the site plan approval to permit a 20-unit multifamily residential community on real property known as 1676 Berlin Turnpike. This is map 22-1, block 114, lot 10. And thanks, welcome back, attorneys.
Good evening again, Madam Chairwoman, members of the Commission, professional staff, town attorney, and invited consultants for the Commission. For the record, my name is Chris Smith. I am a land use attorney with the law firm of Alter &amp; Pearson, and I appear before you this evening on behalf of the owner-applicant Little House Living LLC. And this particular hearing involves the site, the second part of a two-part application, specifically a site plan application for a 20-unit multifamily residential community to be located on real property known as 1676 Berlin Turnpike. Again, I just note for the record that the notice letters were out, the signage was posted. I would respectfully request that all the material, including minutes, letters, motions, the video, and the transcripts concerning the initial moratorium issue be incorporated into the record of this matter as well. And I presume that that's, it's all part of the application process when I filed it. So I'm just, again, as I did with the prior three applications matters, ask that. And again, I'm asked, I would renew the request for a two-part application, excuse me, that the two-part application be combined with the hearing, but as you've already indicated with this application for 16, the two-part application for 1676, we're gonna have separate hearings on the applications. So I have done that for the record, and thank you for that opportunity. Introduce the team, and we'll get through the site plan, I'll do a quick overview, and then we'll hear specifically from our engineers, professional engineer and traffic engineer, so that we can at least get that started for the Commission this evening, knowing that it will be continued as well to the next meeting.
So just, you do have a PowerPoint that was submitted for this application as well?
Yes.
Because it came to me from your client a moment ago. So it was that? You forwarded the other one, okay.
I think so. It wasn't from me.
Okay, so his name was on it for something, but they don't have copies of that, right?
No, I have no PowerPoint.
Okay.
I don't.
Well, you have the first one.
The PowerPoint, the slides until the next meeting.
Okay, just, just, yeah. Wanna make sure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, the site development plans and whatnot, I think are gonna be done on a board in the traffic separately, but there is some information in there with the updated, with the architecturals and the specifications for some of the material that we're not gonna address again this evening. We'll save that for the continued hearing. But there is a proposed layout, which is simply an excerpt from the plan that I think Zach will be referring to. But to stay on track, I'd introduce the members of the team on behalf of the applicant, Little House Living LLC. We do have Mr. Patrick Snow with us this evening. Our professional engineers of Giuliano and Associates LLC, Mr. Zachary Georgina is here, and you'll be hearing from him in a moment. Zach will walk you through the overall site development proposal, and our traffic engineer, Scott Hesketh from FA Hesketh &amp; Associates. Our planning consultant is Mr. Miller from the Miller Planning Group. And what I think would be a good idea, if I may, is Mr. Miller will do a similar presentation to what he did with the text amendment. Perhaps he can do that at the continued hearing, so we can get through some of the site development specifics for this evening and the traffic for the Commission with your permission. Okay, thank you. But we know we have to do what we have to do for the record, but I'm just gonna refer in a very summary fashion to the cover letter that I walked through with the text amendment. I think that this would be pretty much my presentation relative to this component of the site development proposal. So you do have it, it's the cover letter dated May 15, 2023, for the record. And again, I will just summarize it. At page two, do provide you with an overview. Property is approximately 1.95 acres. It's located in the BT1 zone. Historically accommodated a motel use, and that and the host and the related structures were recently removed. There is both public water and public sewer. There was a wetlands permit approved for the regulated activities associated with the prior site development, a little different than this one relative to the regulated activities. It's our position that they're substantially and materially the same and within the scope of those approved by the Wetlands Commission last May, May 3 of 2022, and a wetlands permit 22-02W. We currently have an application pending before the Wetlands Commission. They started the public hearing a couple of weeks ago, I think it was July 12th and July 11th, and the hearing was continued to September 12th. So you'll, you'll be hearing from the Wetlands Commission at some point in time once the hearing is closed and they provide their report to you. A traffic study was prepared and submitted to the Commission. Stormwater management or drainage report was prepared by Giuliano and Associates that was submitted to you and is part of the record. Wetlands permit, we do have sewer available. There are 20, there are 20 units proposed. They are all two-bedroom dwellings or apartments. And again, there will be an affordable component whereby 30% or six of the total number of dwellings and units will be designated as affordable. Three of those will be for individuals and families at the 60% median income, and three of those will be for individuals at the 80% median income. Will be a deed restriction for 40 years as provided by the Connecticut General Statute 8-30G, and as provided by the 10% list maintained by DOH. The town of Berlin has a total number of units, that's a total number of 8.8% of the total number of units that qualify as affordable. So therefore, we do have the ability to submit this application to the Commission this evening. That is my quick summary. And what I'd like to do with the permission of the Chair is turn the presentation over to Mr. Zach Georgia, who will walk you through the site development specifics. And after Mr. Georgia, we'll hear from Mr. Hesketh concerning traffic. Thank you.
So I got the PowerPoint this afternoon. Was it, is it the PowerPoint he'll be using? Oh. Well, if there's no one online, they'll be able to see it, that's why.
All of my boards are on there.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Not a problem.
Regardless, we did just print the PowerPoint. Hopefully, if it was, the printer accepted them, so we'll be handing them out before the end of the meeting, as long as it printed.
I think I see a camera up there that'll aim at that. Is that the case? Got it, okay.
Yeah.
All right, good evening. Let's do this nice and quick, because I know that it is getting late. My name is Zach Georgina. I work with Giuliano Associates, located at 405 Main Street in Wallingford, Connecticut. I am the project engineer for this, focused mostly on the stormwater maintenance plan, a little bit of site layout, and the landscaping plan as well. I always like to start my presentations with a little bit of history. So what we have here on the board is what was previously on the site. It was utilized.
No, you absolutely cannot. That's why we're trying to use that. I'm trying to. You can bring it here. I'm trying to. They're all separate documents, so I have to know which document you need.
I was under the impression that as long as it's on the board, it would be able to be viewed by that camera right there. That's my misunderstanding. If you could go to 2016,
Can you get to this one?
That would be the one. I'm just gonna go with that. Not a problem. So always like to go with a little bit of history, helps us understand what was on the site. Previously, the site was utilized as a motel. It had eight single dwelling units as well as two larger structures, one of which was used additionally as motel, and the other, I believe, was a commercial in support of the motels as well. That represented approximately a 37% impervious surface on site when looking at the associated driveways as well as the structures. What we are proposing to do, if we can jump forward to the submitted drawings. Yep. Go for the 2016 proposed PRO. There we go. What we are looking to do is to take this site, provide essentially 20 dwelling units in 18 separate structures, circular traffic, and bring it up to approximately 48% impervious surface. What we're looking to do with this, obviously, is have a focus on the circular traffic loop. So instead of having essentially one-way traffic come in here, we have traffic able to flow around as necessary. Have the units all with associated garage and driveway parking. Two units of parking per each dwelling unit for a grand total of 40 parking spaces. If we can go to the actual presentation, or the submitted drawings itself, we can go through in a little bit more detail with the stormwater system. But this, what we're looking at here, while she jumps to the other presentation. Oh, that would be backup one, backup one folder. Sorry about that.
Submission set?
Correct, thank you very much.
Got it?
When it loads.
There we go.
All right, if we can go to the next slide.
It had a clock.
Yeah, the Joy wouldn't get the full drawing sets. I'd get a little bit cumbersome, even my computer. Not always a huge fan of the PDFs. All right, this is a little bit cleaner, just so we can look at exactly what is we were just looking at without the underlay. So like I said, we've got the 20 dwelling units of 18 structures, the circular traffic here. We are maintaining upfront 23.9 for a front setback from the property line at the shortest distance to the physical road itself. It's close to a 50-foot setback. The remaining sides of the property, we are maintaining a 15-foot setback. Every attempt is going to be made to maintain as much of the existing greenery. You can see, almost look like little specky hedgehog balls going around the southwest and north side there are the existing greenery. Large established arborvitae, obviously. Anything that does not survive or is removed during this process is going to be replaced with town-specific, town-compliant sized seedlings. I believe you guys have a four-foot height requirement in planting, so they start there. Arborvitae grow fairly fast, so we will eventually have replacement greenage down the line. If we can move on to the next slide, please. Go into how we're planning to handle the stormwater system itself. As previously stated, the existing site did not have any stormwater controls. Essentially, when it rained, anything that hit the roofs hit the ground. Anything that hit the existing driveway just sheet flowed off the ground. Essentially, from those existing conditions to what we are proposing here, and I'll go through in a little more detail, represents between a one second, I believe it is a six to a 14% decrease in stormwater runoff volumes for peak flow. So we're looking to actually decrease the amount of stormwater leaving this site. To accomplish that, we have a series of cul-de-sac units. The largest system is in the northwest of the property. It's approximately 52 cul-de-sac units. These are little cul-de-sac 180s. They're about a foot and a half tall, encased in gravel, and their focus is to infiltrate. This overall system here does have an outflow that would be going to a level spreader that was consistent with the previously approved through wetlands design of the previous application, the wetlands had approved. If we go down to the southwest, we have a smaller system that is 16 units of the same cul-de-sac system, and the last one is 25 units of the same cul-de-sac system. Again, the focus here is to infiltrate those two southern units would be collecting stormwater from the three structures closest to the road, units 18, 19, and 20, and the southwesterly unit would be collecting water from 14, 15, 16, and 17. Connecticut considers roof runoff to be clean, so those would be essentially going directly into the infiltrators, which would be detained, infiltrated into the ground, and in high-water overflow events would be essentially utilizing an overflow pipe to allow water to flow out. That over high-water events do occur in the, I believe, 50- and 100-year storm, but those still represent that 18% reduction in site flow. We are looking to achieve that reduction in storm, peak flows. If we can move on to the landscaping plan. One more, I believe.
Hey, when I blow up, I have to scroll a little slower.
Nope, it's all good. Keep going. Sorry about that. There we go. So as you can see here, what we are looking at is a lot of focus on interior and exterior greenery. We're looking at lining the road with essentially smaller bushes, trees to maintain a fairly, the, to give it a fairly wooded feeling for folks driving in, as well as maintaining the screening to the north, the west, and the south by proposing replacement arborvitae, where we know there's going to be issues, and filling in existing gaps in the arborvitae. As stated before, we will be utilizing essentially the circular traffic loop, and we will have essentially one curb cut. Presently, most of the front of the site is an open driveway. With the previous utilization, it had pretty much the entire frontage had access from the Berlin Turnpike. We're looking to tighten that up to just a two-way traffic approach. So it'd be essentially drive lane-wise 24 feet in width with a 25-foot radius hooking out to the Berlin Turnpike on both sides to allow for access of emergency vehicles. All right, notes real quick. Think we covered the highlight points here. Does the Commission have any questions at this point? I would have to check a scale. Do you recall the distance between units? I believe 10 feet presently. Uh, believe ten feet presently. Thought I wasn't the only one thinking it.
Do you want me? Should I leave this screen up or?
It's fine. Again, good evening. For the record, Scott Hesketh, licensed engineer in the firm of F A Hesketh and Associates office in East Granby, Connecticut, and we wrote the traffic impact statement, which has been submitted in support of this application. Uh, we were asked to take a look at the traffic impacts for this proposed development on the local roadway network. In order to do that, again, we researched the files of the Connecticut Department of Transportation. Uh, the D O T had tra- uh, traffic volume counts in twenty twenty one during COVID. Again, we went back to the two thousand and fifteen year because the traffic volumes during that year were significantly higher. In average daily traffic volumes, thirty one thousand six hundred with morning peak hour of two thousand six hundred and fifty, an afternoon peak hour of two thousand nine hundred and thirty five vehicles. Uh, like the earlier site, uh, this site was previously um, occupied by a motel. Uh, the motel based on the I T E trip generation uh, numbers at a trip generation of about thirty four trips on a daily basis. Ten trips during the morning peak hour, five during the afternoon peak hour. The proposed uh, residential development based on I T E has a trip generation of potential of two hundred and thirty trips on a daily basis. The morning peak hour of seventeen trips, an afternoon peak hour of twenty two trips, resulting in an increase in traffic of seven trips during the morning peak hour and seventeen trips during the afternoon peak hour, uh, comparing the two developments. Um, again, we're on the, the Berlin turnpike, which is a median divided, so all traffic must enter and exit the site via right-hand turn. The capacity analysis at the proposed site driveway intersection uh, leads us uh, to determine that the site driveway approach would operate at a level of service B during the morning peak hour with a delay of about fourteen point four seconds on average. And at a level of service C during the afternoon peak hour with average delays of about twenty point six seconds per vehicle on average. Uh, intersection site distances at the existing, at the proposed site driveway are in excess of seven hundred and twenty feet looking to the north. Adequate for an approach speed of sixty five miles per hour. And the Department of Transportation measures the eighty fifth percentile speed in the southbound direction of fifty four miles per hour. Again, we did a three-year accident review of the southbound section of the Berlin turnpike in this area. Uh, there were a total of about fourteen accidents in the, in the vicinity. Eight accidents occurred uh, at the intersection of Worthington Ridge, six at Meadow Lane. One accident occurred across the site frontage. Of the accidents, there were six ang- six angled accidents, three rear end accidents. One side swipe accident and four accidents involved fixed objects. There was one serious injury and four possible injuries. During those accidents and, and those accidents covered the period between January one twenty twenty and January one twenty twenty three. Um, so based on the review of the background traffic volumes, the site generated traffic volumes, the calculated levels of service at the proposed site driveway and the relatively minor number of accidents occurring on the southbound lanes of the Berlin turnpike in this area is my professional opinion that the traffic volumes associated with this development can readily be accommodated on the local roadway network and they will not uh, constitute a substantial risk to the traveling public. If I should have any specific questions, I'll be happy to entertain them at the appropriate time. Thank you much.
Thank you. All right, so.
Uh, as I indicated, uh, Mr. Miller will go back to him for this component at the continued hearing.
Yeah.
For this particular matter. Uh, and um, to accommodate the commission, I think we'll, we'll stand down and conclude our presentation for this evening.
Yeah.
Been a long day, long evening. And however, if, if members of the public do have any comments that uh, they would like to make, that we can respond to at the next meeting, we're more than happy to do that if the commission. These bits.
All right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, um, I just have the one question for Mr. Husketh. Um, did you submit a written report with your findings to the, to the planning office? Or is there a way we can have one of those written reports for um, our next meeting? Even if you email it.
He did prepare a report, I believe it was submitted. You will certainly make sure that you have an electronic copy.
Yeah. Yep, that's fine.
Just in case you don't have it.
Definitely because they go through the engineering department. We usually only get a couple of reports and they don't, we usually don't get the copies for you guys to get the entire traffic report.
Okay, because my, my mind went a little blurred with the, with the present and I was hoping that I'd be.
Trying to say I made a dull presentation.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying that my mind was just.
If I was sitting in your chairs, I'd say the same.
I was sitting there going, okay, I'm following him and all of a sudden it was like, okay, but that's all right, my bad.
Certainly make sure that uh, you have a copy if, if you already have it.
If she, if she has it, she'll just forward it to me. I'll just print it out. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Anyone from the public may as make a last, okay.
Uh, Sherry Rice, thirty eight, Hallie Court. I come up here as the, as the spokesman for the group that we will defer to the next meeting for our comments.
Okay.
The lateness of the hour.
All right, and then we have our consultants. Um, did you want to make any comments at this time or regarding this and then?
Given, given the lateness of the hour, I don't.
You can. Okay, alrighty. And um, anyone online who wanted to comment at this point? Yes, Donna, you wanted to comment at this point?
Oh, no.
No, you didn't. She just wanted to say goodbye. Okay.
Now, I'll, I, I will defer to the next meeting.
Okay, alrighty. Hopefully it won't be this long. Alrighty. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, um, so do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to continue this matter to the next hearing.
Okay, terrific. Do we have a mo- we have a motion by Ms. George? Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hamel. Further discussion, all those in favor, aye. Those opposed? So moved. All right, on to August seventeenth, yes. Um, just so we can get through some of the old business, no?
Going to comment that the PowerPoint for sixteen seventy six is being handed out to the commission.
Okay.
Great copy of that.
Geez, more of that. All right, so just to look at the old business, sunny border was continued, right, or whatever. They asked for continuance. Uh, application for the residential at Weathersfield, that's also continued. And then the one, the other one that we entertain tonight, we may want to take up real quick is the application of Anthony Valenti on behalf of Newport eight forty eight Farmington Avenue LLC for the proposed text amendment for the Berlin zoning regulation, section eight F Kensington overlay uh, subsection three B, so a special permit uses uh, Village Core and subsection seven affordable guidelines. All right, um, so because I think the, the commission was satisfied with the questions that you had or whatever. Uh, we had some brief and, and good discussion. Is there anything else that you want to comment on or whatever? Okay, so.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve um, on the basis that the application complies or is consistent with the plan of conservation and development and our affordable housing plan. Um, I'd like to approve it.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. George. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, should we give it to Brian, Mr. Hamel? Well, okay, Brian, we're gonna give it to you. Mr. Rogan, further discussion, all those in favor, aye. Okay, great. And then the application for all this other stuff is also continued. And then moving down, we were gonna talk about cannabis and I'm not gonna talk about this stuff tonight. I don't know, I don't know if anyone else is keen on that. Um, consideration of the application fees for Joseph Cut, uh, cause Mulligan's virtual thing on Deming Pro. Do we, is that something that we need to address tonight or?
Um, well, it, it's kind of a couple of three parts. And it's, they're short, I think.
Okay.
You're willing to, to deal with it.
If we could get it off the agenda.
There's gonna be a big meeting, so um, the, you might recall, you saw this application a while back. It came in, but they didn't submit to inland wetlands.
Yes.
And therefore you um, voted to not receive the application because simultaneous submission to wetlands is required at the same time. We were waiting for some surveys to be completed and now the applicant has resubmitted. However, I did find out today from the wetlands agent that they um, that they will be needing a wetlands permit. Again, there, we, we've been represented, they weren't doing, making any changes, but there have been changes made to the site that needs to be rectified, so therefore they need to go to wetlands. So um, I did actually want to confer with counsel before, again suggesting that you um, determined not to accept the application at this time. It was submitted, but they did not simultaneously submit with wetlands again. Um, I would like confirmation from counsel that that's appropriate. But the third part is the reason it was initially put on the agenda before we had that wetlands information and that the survey wasn't adequate. Um, is that they did submit the application fee when they submitted the first application that you didn't receive. The no processing other than the administrative things we would do pre-application in most instances. They um, we did not incur costs such as the posting of the public hearing, notices in the newspaper, interdepartmental reviews didn't happen, et cetera. So what they are asking for is a determination from the commission that, or a decision from the commission that the fees they, they applied at the time their application wasn't heard the first time could be applied to their new application when and some of you are looking at me like, we decide this? Or I think that's what you're thinking. A few years ago or a while back, the um, these decisions went to town council. And they, we've changed, the town changed the rules. And I verified with the finance director that it's up to the commission who knows their costs, knows what happens, understands their applications, et cetera. And it's up to the commission to determine whether the fees can be applied in a different way, refunded, you know, things such as that. So in this case, it would be, the fees were processed. Um, but the typical costs we would see with a application were not incurred. And so therefore, we're asking if the fee can be applied when they make valid application um, at that time.
I don't want to penalize any, any business or whatever, so I, I have no problem with that whatsoever. It's not like we were in the middle of the process and using staff time and everything, so what is the, what's the consensus?
Many applications you've seen where we.
You're happy? June's happy.
Give any feedback.
No, well, well, I, no, because why give it back if there's too much paperwork? Okay.
I would need a vote.
Everyone's good. You're good. You're good. You're good.
I need a vote.
You're good. Brian, you're good?
Make the motion.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I meant motion to say that we should apply the fee to the new application.
Okay, the motion has been made to apply the fee to the new application by Ms. George. Do we have a second, Brian?
I'll second it.
Okay, I'm gonna have it. Okay, further discussion, all those in favor, aye.
And I just asked.
Oh, okay.
Receiving the application that we've received, did you hear me? So the application was initially not received because it needed wetlands. They then represented they would not be making modifications that required wetlands. They've reapplied and the wetlands agent has determined they need wetlands. So I am suggesting the commission not receive the application again. And they resubmit after they have at least submitted to wetlands.
Yeah, so, so she does not object to my recommendation, yes.
We're gonna need another motion, Brian, so.
Quick addition, um, is working with an engineer right now. I don't think they've officially filed with wetlands, but at least they, they haven't. Okay, I was just gonna say that the good news is they're working with an engineer and they've been talking to Jim Horrible, so they're at least process has actually begun where last time I don't think anything could be gone.
Okay, all right, so Diane.
I'll make a motion to um, no.
Okay. That's, that's also odd. Okay, how about that, Brian, or do you want, Scott Hamel's got you back on this, Brian, so, all right. He's got the second for the discussion, all those in favor, aye. Those opposed? So now I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn at eleven ten P M. Oh, I don't even say that. Good night, Representative Beach. Um, so motion to adjourn. Thank God. And who has the second?
I'm second.
Second for Ms. Miller for the discussion, all those in favor, aye. Those opposed, so moved. Good night, Brian.
Good night.
Brian.
Hope to see you soon.
Night.